Good evening Commissioners, Bob Kirk, 19-500 Hall Road, Clinton Township, Michigan. Mr. Box had a good summary of this request. This is an old tired office building, it's about 25 years old. The new buyers are looking to come in and kind of upgrade it a bit and use some other type of uses. Everybody knows what the market is today for office. There is some medical in there. They're looking for some type of retail uses, but we understand because of the size, the adjacent residential, that we have to be a little careful with that. That's why we've offered the conditions. With regard to parking, we show 105 spaces. Under your general retail, we're only required 77. Under medical, 103, so we meet both of those. We're, as you said, we're concerned about the residential behind us, but all along Hall Road, this, pretty much all the properties are Zone C2, C3, and C4. This is kind of unusual at his office. But one of the issues Macomb has is, back when they widened Hall Road, the township didn't take into account enough commercial depth in their rezoning, so we have a lot of these small depth parcels along Hall Road. So everyone's kind of stuck with this issue, but everything's there already, the wall's there, landscaping's there. The type of uses we're going to propose will not be open late, won't have any kind of traffic, shouldn't have any kind of traffic issues. Josh mentioned the salon, that's one of their users already. Salons are a little different than they used to be for the people, whether it be men or women would come in, line up, and sit in wait. Now, these are pretty much independent contractors come in, have their own schedules when people come and go. So we're requesting your consideration in that regard. If you want more information on the salon, we have our staff here. Rick, you want to talk a little about that?
Come on up. No, stay there, sir. You can just have the other seat. State your name and address for the record.
Yes, hello, my name is Ricky Manjo. I live at 4849 East Strong Court, Orchard Lake Village, Michigan, 48323. I am one of the co-founders and co-owners of Cosmo Salon Studios. And as he was speaking of, we have a salon suite brand. We started in Michigan, Troy, Michigan, about five years ago. And over the last five years, we've proven the concept out, kind of got through our kinks, and have won an expansion mode based off data of demand. And one market we've been trying to get, be a part of in the community was the Macomb Township, so, you know, when we followed the site, we thought it would be a perfect opportunity to potentially propose a salon suite here, just based after the data we've received over the last probably three years in regards to leads coming in from the Macomb Township area. It's insane. And so the salon suite concept in general, as they were stating, is a buy appointment only usually. Technically, you know, we build out a facility, on average, about 30 studios. These are individually 100 to 250 square foot studios that all beauty professionals have the opportunity now to leave a salon where they're getting 50% taken out of their commission after doing it for 15 years, and they can go in their basement if they want to, but just not having the business experience. We have the opportunity to now offer them a turnkey opportunity, their own studio. It's usually one-on-one, or sometimes you see two chairs in there, by appointment only. And what we've seen in this trend is, you know, they're working smarter, not harder. The income every year has risen 20 or 30%. And so, based off the use, it's 100% correct. This is not a traditional salon where it's attracting all types of clients walking in all day. Most of these beauty professionals work probably on average three, maybe four days a week, based off our data and what we're seeing. It's usually like the Friday, Saturday, Sun Sundays. And they're mostly by appointment only, so people are coming in, people are leaving. And I would say, we currently have about, company-wide, seven locations all over Michigan, about 342 stylists or beauty professionals under our brand. And we have yet to seen any of the facilities filled all at once, potentially maybe December sometime. And that's the beauty of making your own schedule, coming in when you can. Most of these beauty professionals are women in this industry, and a lot of them have kids, so a lot of the times, they're basing their schedule around school, and some don't. So it's always, like I said, a fair trade of people coming in and out, but it's usually controlled by the appointment only. So I wanted to give you the full spectrum.
Okay.
Open any questions?
Anything else, you guys?
That's it.
Okay. Commissioners, we'll open it up.
I got a question. To the petitioner, when is the night hour closing roughly?
On the whole site, we've offered a nine o'clock.
Nine o'clock, okay. So they all got to be done by nine?
That's in our conditional rezoning, which should be recorded when with the land.
Okay. And I got one quick question. Thank you. And I got one quick question, Mr. Box. So, if this didn't work, and they sold it, the conditions that we would not allow would stay in effect on that unit?
That's correct. They, if they chose to, if this were to be approved, and then, you know, a couple of years from now, they sold, the new owner could follow these conditions and still be required to follow these conditions, or they can choose to default back down to the O1 category. Those would be their options.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Typically with a rezoning, we don't ask use-specific questions, but this use is not one I'm overly familiar with, and I think it's pertinent to the parking, so I just am curious about a couple of things. Do the, so I suppose your clients would be the beauty professionals themselves. Do they lease one booth or area, if you will, or do they trade them out as they come in? Is it like a shared office, or do they have an area that they use exclusively?
It's a great question. We have a minimum of a 12-month term per studio. And currently, our retention rate is about 97%.
So we're sort of like a sublease for you?
Correct.
Okay.
They're technically subleasing the space from us, and then we have a lease in a 12-month minimum terms, up to 10 years, we see in our company right now.
Okay. I actually answered both of the questions I have for that, so thank you, appreciate that. And then, one thing, just to follow up with Mr. Box. I know that Mr. Bentley was not able to make it tonight, but did have several questions, and I guess, I don't know if you were able to read them, but I had a couple of questions that bounced off of those. He had some questions with regards to different things that could be sold, and I just wanted to verify, I think that the conditional rezoning has, one of the conditions is any use requiring a loading and unloading zone? Do we require loading and, what is the level of retail that requires a loading and unloading zone?
Basically, any retail that's selling a product where you're physically going to walk out the door with something in your hands, because that product needs to be brought there and loaded on. The big thing that, with the loading zone, the reason that that's in the conditional rezoning agreement was again because of parking. We didn't want to lose any parking spaces here, so.
No, and understood, obviously. That just helps narrow down the list of uses that can be done without a loading zone. Just so I can understand that better, so in the case of this use, I assume that the salon, the stylists would have, it's typical that they will have incidental products that they will sell, which normally, I would assume, would be brought in by the individual. So basically, only incidental retail if there's.
Correct.
Okay. And then, just to verify, I believe it was mentioned, it might be that the timeout was nine o'clock. I think the agreement I have says eight, so I don't know if I'm looking at a different agreement.
It does say 8:00 PM, yep.
I just want to confirm if that's what, if that's what it is.
The facility's open from 9:00.
Yeah, the conditional rezoning agreement is 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, the facility's open till, the service is open till 8:00, and by the time they, the girls close, or guys close up.
Understood. I just wanted to make sure what we had was obviously what you guys have. No apology needed, just want to make sure we're on the same page. All right, thank you, that was all my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Tuckfield, Mr. Spatafora?
Yes, thank you. Either from Mr. Kirk or Mr. Orlando, has that conditionally rezoning agreement been executed as of yet?
Going back with drafts, and we've agreed that it changes on approval.
And Josh, with what we have in our packet, is it the final?
That's the final one, and that's the one they're here seeking approval for. So you guys would recommend it to the board, and if the board approves it, then it would be executed.
Okay. Is it Mr. Manjo? I'm sorry. I love your business concept. I myself am a customer of my salon suites, if it's the same, one of the same branches that you own, one of the same franchises, that's part of your group that you own over in Clinton Township on 18 Mile and Garfield Road?
No, we actually created our own brands, Cosmo Salon Studios.
Cosmo Salon, okay.
Same sector, same concept, just different brands.
Okay.
Yeah, but the My Salon Studio is actually a national chain.
Okay.
Over the nation. We actually have a franchise program rolling out by hopefully Q1 of '24, God willing.
So, is that going to operate similar then to my salon suite, but from a local flavor of your ownership then, or?
With all, yes. And hopefully even better.
Okay. Competition sake. All right. I have no further questions, thank you.
Mr. Tuckfield, what's the total office space in there, and how much is vacant? You said there's a couple suites vacant?
As in, are you talking about the whole commercial center?
Yes, the whole commercial center.
15,500.
And how much is vacant?
4,000, roughly.
Of the 15,000 is vacant?
No.
4,000 is vacant. 4,000 of the 15,000 is vacant?
Correct.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone else? All right. And I need a motion to open it to the public?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. If there's anyone in the public that would like to talk about the conditional rezoning request from office to commercial, please come up to the podium. You have four minutes.
My name is Henrietta McNairford, and I live in the subdivision directly behind the Omni Center. And my concern is, I don't, I see some for-sale signs in that lot where the Omni Center is. If they change that to commercial, what can I expect if someone else buys that building? Can I expect for them to come and say, because it is now commercial, it doesn't fit our needs, and they go in and they start doing some construction that would further impede upon the subdivision and cause disruption? What can I expect if they sell that building?
Okay. All right. No, typically what we do is we take all the people that want to speak, and then we answer their questions at the end, so.
Okay.
All right. Is there anyone else who would like to talk? Okay. All right, at this time, at, what is it, 6:51, I'd like to close the public portion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Support.
Supported by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, Mr. Box?
Well, to answer the question, similar to what we said previously, any new owner would be, if this were to be approved, any new owner would be bound by these same rules. So, though it's, in some ways being rezoned to commercial, it's conditioned on a number of things, including a long list of things that would be prohibited from being in there. So it's still going to be, for the most part, acting like an office building, moving forward, whether it's these folks owning it, or some other owner in the future.
All right.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Just to answer that question, the for-sale sign is out there, but Mr. Pata here, they're the new buyers, they're looking to buy it. That's one of their conditions to get this done. With regard to expansion, we can't make the building any bigger, we're stuck with the site plan, the building, so.
And so you're not making any outside changes either, is that correct? Okay.
Might be one day. They might want to upgrade something one day, but I think we have to come back if we did anything.
Right, right. Okay. All right. Motion?
Mr. Chairman? There's no further discussion. I will make a motion to recommend approval to the Macomb Township Board for the conditional rezoning request from office low-rise O1 to commercial general C2, with the conditions as stated, as presented by our planner and department reviews.
Support.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Spatafora, supported by Mr. Tuckfield. Mr. Tuckfield, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Spatafora, yes. Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Meyerly, yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, look forward to it.
Josh, when will that go before the board?
Next Wednesday.
Thank you.
All right, next item. PUD general review plan, Hartford Village, permanent parcel 0814102001, located on the south side of 24 Mile Road, east of Card, section 14, MJC Hartford Village LLC, petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. So I'm going to kind of walk you through the history of this site. I know there's a lot of people here interested in this, so everybody can understand kind of where we're at with this and how we got to where we're at. So this is what's called a planned unit development, or a PUD. This is multiple homeowners associations combined into one development. There are multiple homeowners associations within this. They share lots of common space, including a clubhouse. I'm assuming most of them pay dues into their homeowners association for maintenance of certain things, including the clubhouse and the pool, and it looks like there's some tennis courts there. So as you see, a portion of this PUD is not finished. This was started a number of years ago by a different developer. I'm not even sure who that was, off the top of my head, but it, over time, different developers have been in the development. This Hartford Village is the final phase of this development. So when it was approved originally, the site plan included some trails. So I've added this image from 2007, so you can see, if you can see my cursor here, all of these trails were built by the original development, including all of the roadways. Even though there were no units there, the township requires the original developer, they were required to put in all the infrastructure for the entire development up front. That developer did do that, and then, I don't know if they sold off the properties or how it got to where it is today, but the image you see on the right side of that, again, Hartford Village is the final phase of that, and you see in that aerial, which is, I believe, from 2020, some of those buildings have even been built in the past couple of years as well, but those trails are long gone. So when the original builder built all of this, infrastructure, the clubhouse, and the units that they built, at that point, they turned the portion of common space over to the homeowners association when that first phase was completed. So at that point, those items, maintenance and everything else are, under the burden of the homeowners association. It appears to me that those trails were not maintained, and as you can see, they're gone. Those trails are now gone. So what the builder is seeking now is, again, this is the originally approved plan on the left, and what they're proposing here on the right is, we can only require this builder to build what's on their portion of this development. If we were to require them to build those trails, let me go back a slide, it would only be little stubs of trails that connect to nothing, because the rest of those trails are not there anymore, they no longer exist. So what they're asking for is to not build those portion of the trails. I know we've gotten a number of letters from residents opposing this, but we also got letters of support from the presidents of all of the HOAs involved here. I think one of the things that needs to be understood is that if this is not approved, and it's the will of the Planning Commission and the Township Board, that this builder has to build their portion of the trails, then the township would also have to enforce the HOAs to reinstall their portion of the trails, that they didn't maintain since 2007 or whenever they were built. And I think that's where some of the confusion is. I think some folks are anticipating that this builder would be building all of these trails, and we're kind of letting them off the hook by approving this, and that is not the case. They're only building small, little stubs of these trails that would lead to other trails that have since gone away. So that is what they're seeking. They were here a couple of months ago. The PUD is a two-step process for approval, the concept plan, and then the general design plan. So this was all approved back in 2005 or 2006. So to amend that, they have to amend the concept plan, which they did a couple of months ago, and now they're back in front of you to amend the general design plan. So that being said, knowing that we have, we have letters from some residents who I'm sure will get up and speak that are opposed to this, but we do have letters of support from the presidents of all the HOAs, and that's who we have to abide by. So, that being said, the township is recommending approval of this.
Okay. Mr. Box, just a quick question. The trails that are now gone are not on the Hartford property, correct? Is that what you're saying? That's why?
They're in the, small portions of them are.
Right, yes, yeah.
But they're in the overall PUD general space. So it would be the same as if, say, the tennis courts were never maintained, and weeds grew, and you couldn't play tennis anymore. That's not on the Hartford portion. That's common element that the homeowners association needed to maintain. We couldn't then make this developer, just because they're still building in there, go back and fix the tennis court. That's not their responsibility. That was handed over to the homeowners association at the completion of the first phase.
Okay, gotcha. All right, petitioner, are you in the audience? Come on up, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Mario Izzy, I'm with MJC Companies, 46600, Romeo Plank, suite number 5, Macomb Township. Thank you for the opportunity. Mr. Hardy, I have nothing to add to Mr. Box's explanation, I'm here to answer any questions, if I may, please.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
All right, then we'll turn it back over to the commissioners. Any comments?
I just want to be clear, so this was turned over to the homeowners, their responsibilities, and your HOA presidents are all in agreement with this?
Correct.
That's all you have?
Okay. All right, anyone else?
Mr. Box, I just want to clarify, you said that at Hartford Village, you make and put the trails, and then the homeowners have to put the rest of the trails, the homeowners association, the ones that disappeared, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Mr. Hardy?
No one else?
I apologize to interrupt, just one more point for clarification, I should have said this before. I believe the original paths that are missing were originally installed as a woodchip path. And it was installed right around maybe 2005, '06, '07-ish, you know, when the economy shifted, the original developer record, they give this project back to the bank, the development company that we bought this project from subsequently, they bought it the way it was, those woodchip paths were no longer, they just eroded over time and disintegrated over time. I believe currently, if paths do have to be installed, they would have to be a hard surface path like we do on any new site plans that we bring before you, either in asphalt or concrete. So, obviously, there's an added burden to that, and that burden would be on everybody, not just the developer, or Hartford Village, us as the builder there, MJC, but the HOA as well. So, we're trying to come up with some sort of happy medium here, if we can move forward, please.
Got you.
Thank you.
Okay, commissioners, nothing, right?
Just to follow up on that, so them paths are grown, and they're not even using them, even with what is there, there's nothing to use.
Mr. Oliver, if you look at areas over time, you'll see that those paths have just eroded into nothingness. They were never freshened up, they were never required to be.
They're never managed.
No, sir. So, I'm sure there's people that walk their dogs there, so I'm not going to say nobody uses those paths, but it's not to current standard. And I would say it's, you know, like walking out in the woods anywhere, trip and fall, God forbid, something happens, you get hurt, and so, walk it at your own risk, but.
Yeah.
So to answer your question, I can't speak if anybody does not use it, I'm sure somebody does walk some of those open paths, those open spaces, but.
They're not clear runways.
To my knowledge, no, sir.
It's overgrown, and.
To my knowledge, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mr. Tuckfield?
Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Box. Mr. Box, I know in the past, we've seen PUDs that had agreements and then were built, and then things weren't maintained. And to that end, I guess I have more concern with the existing property that is not maintaining the agreement that was in the PUD than, than a new builder who's coming in who's trying to match up to existing. But I guess my question is, what is our, as a township, what is the ability we have to enforce a PUD agreement for a development that's already built? I know we've had problems with it elsewhere.
Yeah, so it's, it's a site, there's an approved site plan here. The township has the ability to enforce that site plan being compliant. Technically, those trails not being there for a decade, this site is not in compliance. If they were, for example, to, you know, need a new roof on their clubhouse, at that time, the inspector can go out there and say, "I can't approve this until your entire site is brought into compliance," which would include those trails, because those trails are on the approved site plan. And that's where we're at with Hartford. They're not going to be able to finish their development until they install those trails. And to their point, if we require them to put those trails, they're not going to connect to anything.
Lead to nowhere.
They're going to lead to nowhere, exactly.
So, just to clarify, you know, when this PUD was originally approved, the original developer offered these paths as a financial benefit that would cost them some significant amount in exchange for the higher density. So, it would be reasonable to assume that if the existing HOA association had to install them, there would be a relatively significant cost to the existing HOA to bring it back to neutral, to match up to the new development.
That's correct.
And that would fall on the HOA with no support from the township, no support from any other entity, no developer, it would be solely on the HOA.
Correct.
Okay, all right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Izzy.
Okay. Are we all good?
I just have a question. Mr. Box, would that be, the original site plan was woodchips, would that be, if this gentleman was talking about, would it be asphalt?
So, I don't have the original PUD agreement in front of me, but I do believe it was approved as a woodchip path. So potentially, they could install it as woodchip, that would, it's not what we would want from the township, we don't want woodchip paths precisely for this reason. This is what happens, they're not maintained, and they go away. We would prefer, you know, asphalt or concrete pathways that are going to stay there much longer, more expensive up front, but a lot less maintenance moving forward.
Okay.
All right. I got one last question. Maybe Mr. Box can handle this. Hartford gets built, they all come to agreement down the road to put a new path in, can it still be done?
Absolutely, they can put in those paths.
Yeah. I mean, I just need to know, because maybe they'd all come to an agreement where, and I don't want the opportunity not to ever have a path there, so the opportunity of a path in the future could be there.
If they so chose to do that, they would be allowed to do that, yes.
Okay, thank you.
And to clarify, Mr. Chairman, that path that Mr. Oliver indicated, would that just be restricted only to Hartford Village, or if there was a mutual agreement among all the associations that could run throughout the existing?
Correct. Right now, the paths are shown on the site plan, so if they were to install them, if this were to be denied, and they were required to install them, they would have to install them in that format, the way they're shaped, and where the connections are made, and so forth. If this is approved, and they're removed in a couple of years from now, the homeowners association decides they want to go back in and put trails in, at that point, those trails are no longer on the site plan. They can come up with a configuration that they would want, and go down that avenue. They wouldn't be restricted by that configuration.
And that would be for both parcels?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. We good?
Yeah.
All right?
Yeah.
At this time, I'd like to open it to the public with a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Smith, seconded by Mr. Meyerly. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, anybody opposed? All right. Folks, if you'd like to come up and talk about the PUD general review for the Hartford Village, now is your time, you have four minutes, and we'll take all of your concerns, and then we'll address everything at the end. So, if you'd like to come up, please state your name and address for the record.
Stephen Truman, 22040 Norwich Drive.
Actually, it wasn't a couple of months ago you dealt with this, it was back in June. My first que, and I, I know you'll answer the questions later and that's fine, but I wasn't notified when you did it in June and I don't know if there was a public hearing at that time. I, in fact, I don't think anybody was here back in June when you first had this before you. So, I don't know if that had required a public hearing. Uh, but the other thing is, I heard it again today, we believe, the word "we believe", that the, that original path was supposed to be woodchips. I would like somebody to look at the site plan all the time and, and tell you and us that it was not supposed to be, or what it was supposed to be. If it was supposed to be asphalt, then my next question is, how did each of these stages get approved without that having been installed? At some point, there must be a bond taken, uh, the roads are looked at, all these type things. So, that's a whole different question. If, if it's woodchips, I agree with the, the correspondence you got back in June that, uh, it's, it's just going to be a pain to, and, and I certainly would, uh, agree that we should not handle it at that time. But to me, that's the first question that you should know before you vote on this. The second one, and it comes back to my point regarding the notification. With all due respect, the new, uh, parcel number you gave us tonight was the one that was on the public hearing notice we got. But that's one unit in this condominium project, it's one person, actually. My recollection, having been in government for 32 years, is that the notice is to go out 300 feet around the property. I think the number you have on here, um, on the agenda is the old, original parcel for this entire thing. So, my, my one question is, were people notified for the first hearing? Were they supposed to be? Uh, and if they were, I think you said, yeah, you didn't have anybody here. And I think maybe there's a notification problem you want to look at. Uh, but the second one, and, and more importantly, is just really, what are you waiving? If you are waiving it. Now, I know you, I, I know in the June meeting, I saw the, uh, our management company was here, I saw. Uh, she had a letter, yes, from all the associations. But I, I can't speak for the other people that are here, but I never saw, uh, I never saw that letter until I watched your meeting. And I never got anything from any of our associations until after that meeting, so. No problem with the woodchip issue, but a lot of concerns here, I think, uh, need to be really nailed down. Thank you. And I thank you for your time, I know you all don't get paid for this.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else?
My name is Rick Luzak, I'm in Hartford, Addison Crossing, 52930 Ansonia Way. In 2017, I moved from, uh, from Traverse City and I was looking for a place to live here. I, I stumbled upon, um, Addison Crossing. Incidentally, Addison Crossing and the villages, which is two-thirds of this whole, uh, thing that's showing here, well over 200 units, is all the same builder. So, I, I went into the sales office, you know, the same, the same stuff you get all the time. I was told that the clubhouse, we had unfettered use of it. At, that's not the way it is. That the, that the tennis court, which had a lock on it, still has the same lock on it. And, uh, we were told that, um, one of the sales pitches was those paths were going to lead to a nature center that was behind, uh, where, uh, the villages is. So, um, the sales pitch was, those paths would be put back in, we would have use of those paths and there would be eventually a, a, uh, a, a, a nature-type walkway. I want to thank Mr. Misery, he came yesterday to tell us about a negotiations that's been going on for over three years that no one knew about. And there, there was, um, agreements to the tune of $95,000 that we knew nothing about. So, we, we had our president sign a letter we didn't know anything about. Some of this stuff, you know, back then, um, in '17, when they're talking about pathways, you know, we just assumed that these things are going to be put in. None, none of that ever happened. We have, we have a, a, a representative from the master board. All of this negotiation was going through her, this, this representative, who never told us anything. She's an employee of the master board. And all of this is happening, we don't know anything about it. And, um, I think there's something wrong with that. I think these four letters, uh, incidentally, three of the four letters came from the people that this individual, this employee manages. They don't manage our, our association. So, we were the last one, but these things have been going on for over three years. We knew nothing about it. Nothing about money changing hands, incidentally, there's no paperwork on that money. When we, when we signed off with, with MJC, we had a five-page document for $30,000. We got $95,000 going back and forth, nothing. It, it, it just doesn't feel right that we get a sales pitch, they tell us certain things that's going to happen, those didn't happen. You know, we have 84 units, the villages has 130-some. It's a, it, it's a pretty big development in terms of the same builder doing, doing these things. And, um, it, it just doesn't feel right that we weren't involved. And, you know, most of that money has been passed. Uh, I think there's 40, I think, uh, Mr. Misery told us that there was $40,000 still had to be, uh, passed over. We're not going to see any of that. You know, it goes to the master board, but they don't show us minutes, they don't tell us, they won't even give us their email address. So, there's a problem. And, um, I think this is just going to exacerbate the, the, the problem with, uh, with what's going on here. But I, I can assure you, Mr. Misery was, he came yesterday to talk to us.
You have about 30 seconds.
Pardon?
You have about 30 seconds left.
Those negotiations have been going on over three years. And I appreciate that he came, he came yesterday, he did a great job explaining everything, going, going back to the history. You know, but we don't know any, we didn't know anything about this. Thank you, thank you all. And, and I want to thank Mr. Misery for his honesty and everything yesterday. It's the 11th and a half hour and we get, we get the explanations, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Come on up, sir.
Hello, my name is Richard Hoover, 21855 Hanover Drive, Macomb. Excuse me, I was the former president, I was the president that was just referred to, who had signed the letter, which was March 25 of last year. And when I became president, I found accidentally on some old minutes, something about a PUD. So, I began asking, what is this PUD all about? So, I visited Mr. Box in December of 2021, who told me what the PUD was about. Uh, met with him a second time with the, at that time, vice president. Then had a third meeting with Mr. Box and also with someone from the planning department, uh, from the building department, it might have been Mr. Bambles, I'm not sure, who showed me those drawings, et cetera, et cetera. And I was able to go online and find the history of 2005 up to the current site aerials. And then what happened, we learned that there were two letters already signed by the, uh, two communities. And then we found out from the planning department that they wanted all four communities to sign off on this agreement, because we all are part of the same community, the one Hartford's community. So, after seven meetings that we as a board had, at each meeting, when we found information ongoing, we then reported in our normal minutes procedure and then posted those minutes on our community website, explaining every meeting, who we met with, um, every dollar amount that was, that was mentioned, uh, even copies of the checks that were, uh, indicated, were also, uh, communicated to the community via the normal minutes procedure. So, there were seven meetings prior to this. And then the last meeting, I'm sorry, six meetings, the last meeting is we had a general meeting with the public, after which we handed out a multi-page document that indicated every meeting, every conversation, um, every reference to every kind of thing that we had discussed. So, the community was well-informed through the normal process. And, um, at that particular time, we had a vote and it was decided, and it was a, not, it was a majority vote, four to one, that voted for, one against, for this development. And as we understood that we would have to be responsible to put in our side of the pass and whatever else was there to connect to those. And my understanding from Mr. Box in our conversations was that they were woodchips. And that woodchips had grown over from the 2005, 2007, and there were, I think, two builders prior to MJC coming in. And each time, what wasn't done, had already been turned over to the responsibility of the master community. Which means if the community is required to, to put in their side because this fails, then there's going to be a great expense, plus, we're talking about putting in a sprinkler system, the maintenance of a sprinkler system, most likely than the installation of concrete or asphalt and the subsequent maintenance of that concrete or asphalt, especially in the wintertime where they'd have to be plowed. And we got numbers recently that we're talking about possibly an $80,000 bill as of the estimate three years ago. So, we can only assume that that number is going to be much.
I don't mean to interrupt, but you're down to a minute.
Okay. And we expect that that number is going to obviously be inflated from $80,000 three years ago to a bit much more. And it's a burden that the community, um, mostly citizens who are on social security, who basically have what you call the fixed incomes. And this would be a tremendous burden when you're talking about $100,000, who knows, to install and then the ongoing forever water bill. I happen to also be on the sprinkler committee where we try to help maintain the system and I think we're talking about $10,000 a year in water bill for a smaller area. So, we're expecting to have another increase that would be our cost. And that's essentially my comments. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, sir. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mike Stern. 52884 Ellsworth Way. Our past board never notified, uh, as a co-owner, any of the co-owners of, uh, MJC's request to amend this PUD. The, uh, I believe our past president signed this letter based solely on his personal feelings and opinions without any consideration for the co-owners. The planning commission, uh, I would ask that you consider to, uh, set this aside for 60 days so, uh, until all the Addison Crossing members can be notified properly. And again, thank you for your time.
Sure, my name is Kaye Smith. Do you want me to spell that, are you okay with that? I live at 21933 Kenset Drive, in the Addison Crossing section of this community. As far as notification, when our board started, that was when we discovered that this was going on. The previous board before us was not required to sign a letter or asked to do so. It was between two of the four communities that had to approve this. When we found out about it, we did as a board investigate by talking to, um, Scott at MJ, Scott at MJC. We spoke to the property manager of the master board, who, um, oversees the, the common between all of the communities. And we spoke to, um, our past representative on that board. And we did a lot of investigating. And at every meeting, we had five board members, listening to the speakers telling us what the, the history was. We did put this in minutes, we put it out to the community. And then at the end of seven meetings, we voted as a board, four to one, to approve this for our section. We were the last section to do that because we were doing all this background checking. So, it was four to one that we did approve it. And, um, Mr. Misery came yesterday, there was a very small group of homeowners that showed up for that meeting. So, I'm assuming that their interest was not there to question this any further than what had already been explained in minutes. We had a PUD document, which we, um, did a PowerPoint presentation at a board meeting to discuss the PUD and answer any questions people had at that time. And then we did have the printed one, and then we had it, um, on the website of our property manager. So, I feel the community was notified, this went on from January until March when we signed the letter. And at that time, I said it was four to one and we were the fourth community to approve it. So, I, I have nothing else to say. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else?
Good evening, my name is John Leahy, I live at 52785 Ellsworth Way in, uh, Addison Crossing. Yes, we were advertised a nature trail. And every time I looked at the map, I wondered where it was, because it's not showing there. But there's a literal, what I would call, a forest, that's where I thought where the nature trail was. In among the trees and whatever. What we're dealing with here, and they were gone by the time we got here, 2016 when I closed, we had, we were told, uh, December of last year, heard about this PUD, heard about we had trails, but they let them grow over. What we're dealing with, and no one has mentioned it, I'm surprised no one has mentioned it, what we're dealing with is the easement of the power towers that go through this property. And yes, it's common area, but these paths were nothing more walking under power lines. They grew over and they mow that three, four times a year. So, what they're asking is, if this doesn't go through, yes, they'll put it in, we'll have to attach to it. They talked about sod, irrigation, concrete paths, years of upkeep. And no one has mentioned that that's what we're dealing with, an easement. When I finally found out this is where the walking paths were, it's, what? So, the fact that we're dealing with four communities, three of which said, "We don't want this burden cost", our, our fourth vote completed the ticket. But if you're talking about, like, if you're talking majority, a three to one vote says they don't want this. They let it go before we ever got there. So, you know, uh, I don't know if it was properly described as what is being requested here. And it'd be fine if we had, had the paths, but again, it's not, it's not a nature trail if you're walking under power lines. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Anyone? Okay. Then at 7:28, I'd like a motion to close the public portion. So moved. Motion by Mr. Spatafora. You know, support. Supported by Mr. Meyerly, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission, uh, I'm going to try to go down the list of, of notes I took here for questions. Uh, with regards to. With regards to the wood chip pathways versus asphalt, I think that's a fair point by Mr. Truman. I will confirm, I'm quite confident, but I will confirm that wood chips are what were allowed with the original PUD. This did take place in 2005, which I believe the current township engineer was here at the time, and I don't think he would have allowed it to be built any way other than what's on their plan, but I will confirm that. As far as the mailers go, I can provide lists if somebody wants to come and look. Obviously, people were notified in June because lots of folks were here. If one individual didn't get a mailer, I can't control the mail, but I can provide the list of what, who it was mailed to and the confirmation of that. As far as HOA notifications, when they were having HOA meetings, that's not really in our purview. You know, that's something that they need to take up internally, as well as some of their discussions of money changing hands. That's, I have no idea what that's about. That has nothing to do with what we're here about this evening. The last gentleman pointed out that this is an easement, and he's correct, this is an easement with the ITC corridor. The original PUD got approval to put these trails in the easement, and that's in perpetuity. So they would still be allowed to re-put these trails in there if that's what came as a result of this meeting and the board meeting next week. As far as nature trails and whether or not that's a nature trail, and I think there were some other comments about what they were promised when they bought their home, that's a civil court issue. You know, if you want to track down your sales agent and say you didn't get what you were promised, that's not what we're here to talk about this evening.
Okay. Any comments, or do we have a motion? I have a question. If we vote to recommend, and I know you've, I think you've already said this, but if we vote to recommend, the HOAs can, if they choose to, put those paths in, correct?
They can, yes.
Okay. And Mr. Izzy, you'd be responsible for the stub part, so to speak?
If this, so, no. If this is approved at the, you know, if you recommend and it's approved by the board, they would not be responsible for those stub parts.
Okay.
If in the future the HOA wants to go back and put in those trails, that would be on them to do that. What you're voting on here this evening or recommending on is whether or not you would like MJC to put in those little stub trails that would then kind of force our hand to enforce the board to, the HOAs to put in their portions of the trails.
Okay. At their cost.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
I have a question. Mr. Box, we were here in June, as I understand, about these trails, correct?
Yes.
And the homeowners association at that time wanted to vacate the trails, correct?
Yes. All of the homeowners associations provided a letter in support. I'm sure you got some of the emails I was forwarding. There was some confusion in the past week. Sounds like one of the homeowners associations has a new president, and they were considering rescinding their letter of support with this new president. After some discussion, that president has emailed, which I think you got a copy of, stating that they are not rescinding their letter. They are in support of removing these trails.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, to Mr. Box. Obviously, we have letters of support or not support from neighborhood associations.
Are we, if they wanted to keep it or wanted to remove it, are we required to abide by that regardless, or is this more with regards to the section of the PUD that we're directly looking at?
I guess I'm not understanding the question.
We're getting, we're getting input from adjacent property owners with regards to a portion of the property that they don't own. And typically, we would, we would take neighbors' recommendations as informational, but we wouldn't apply more weight to them than that. Because of there being an association, a master association, are we required to attach more weight to that, or?
That's why they, we required them to get the letters from the homeowners associations. So a lot of this is in the common space. So it might be on the general site of Hartford Village, but it will, in the future, become common space, which is relevant to all of the units in here. And our responsibility is to make sure that who they elected as their HOA presidents tell us, are they in support?
Because essentially, it is directly shared ownership of this portion, even though MJC is developing that currently.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this item? Anyone?
Mr. Chairman, if there's no further discussion, I'm going to make a motion to recommend, this will be a recommendation, Mr. Box.
Correct.
A recommendation to the Board of Trustees to approve the PUD general review plan for Hartford Village. Is this the permanent parcel we had the modification on? Permanent parcel 0814102001. And this is based on the recommendations from the planning department and also based on the hardship that it would cause the existing fixed income seniors if we enforced the stipulations of this plan.
Support.
Okay. Motion by Mr. Tuckfield, supported by Mrs. Smith. Mr. Tuckfield, please call the roll.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Meyerly?
Yes.
All yeses, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Motion passes. All right. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. All right. Thank you, Mr. Izzy.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next item, you know what, maybe we'll take a five-minute recess. Should we do that?
I'm allergic to you.
Take a five-minute recess. So if the rest of you want to just, you know, do whatever.
Thanks for joining, Mr. Hardy.
Okay. Next item on our agenda, Site Condominium Subdivision Plan, River View Estates of McComb. Permanent parcel 0817201014, located on the southeast corner of Romeo Plank Road and 24 Mile Road. Section 17. River View Estates LLC petitioner. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. As you see in your packet and on the screen behind you, this is, as you said, located on the southeast corner of Romeo Plank and 24 Mile Road. It is just south of the cemetery, kind of across from a couple condo developments and near the His Rock facility. This is a single-family subdivision with 30 units. This site was actually approved, this site plan was approved in 2018. However, they have, they had some issues with a pump for their sewer system that has taken them a number of years to get approvals, and therefore, the site plan lapsed, and so they're back here seeking approval on the site plan. I don't believe much has changed from the original, but perhaps some. That being said, they do have the 20-foot-wide dedicated landscape area, which is required. All the lots meet the depth-to-width ratio. They do have their accessible, accessible access with the new curb cut on Romeo Plank. They're showing their eight-foot pathway that's required, as well as five-foot sidewalks within the subdivision itself. All staff has, all the relevant departments have reviewed this and are recommending approval at this time.
Okay. Petitioner of the audience? Come up, sir. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name, excuse me, my name is Jerry Maniachi, 50215 Shana Road.
Okay. Do you have anything you'd like to add?
No, no. We've been working on this for quite some time. I believe we've met all of the requirements that the township has requested.
Mr. Box mentioned something about possible changes to the, what did you say, 2018?
It was approved in 2018. I don't have the 2018 plan in front of me, but I don't think a whole lot has changed. I'll let Mr. Maniachi speak to that. But this was, as I said, this was approved in 2018, but they had some issues with the pump station that has taken them a number of years to get approvals.
Right.
And thus, they're back in front of you for seeking an approval of the site plan.
So other than the pump station, any?
No, other than the pump station. Originally, the pump station was going to go out to Romeo Plank, but Mr. Van Tiflin asked us if we would move it to the parcel going north across 24 Mile Road. And that, correct, that's where it's going to be. So it took us a little bit of time to get some easements across on the north side of 24 Mile.
Gotcha.
And that's where we are.
Okay. Commissioners?
I just got one question. Josh, just on that parcel that touches 24, is that set up for housing, or is it just?
No, that's for, that's strictly for the pump station. That drive access is for service of that station.
Okay. So that?
That's not a unit within this development. Their access is only on Romeo Plank Road.
Okay. All right. So that, would that be maintained, the property, the vegetation?
The pump station area would be?
In that, all that area?
Yeah, that would be considered common space to the sub. Yep.
Excuse me. It is, to my understanding, that there's room for one lot, but it is not a part of this parcel. It will not be.
That'll come in later.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Anyone?
Just one question, Mr. Hardy. I believe the river runs on the east side there, correct? The Clinton River, isn't that behind that?
Yes. That is the middle branch of the Clinton River.
Middle branch. The middle branch, okay.
Okay. All right. Anyone else? All right. Then I'd like a motion to open this item, the Site Condominium Subdivision Plan for River View Estates to the public.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Smith.
Smart.
Supported by Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Anybody opposed? All right. If there's anyone here that would like to come up and speak, just like before, you have four minutes, and then we take all your questions and concerns, and we answer them at the very end. Anyone at all?
Okay.
Okay. Well, then at 7:48, we'll need a motion to close the public portion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver, supported by Mrs. Smith. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion passes. All right. Do we have a motion on this item?
Mr. Chair, I'll make that motion to recommend the Site Condominium Subdivision Plan review, I'm sorry, River View Estate of McComb, permanent parcel number 0817201014.
Okay. Motion by Mrs. Smith.
In our support.
Supported by Mr. Meyerly.
If I could, could add, Mr. Hardy, this is not a recommendation to the board, this is an approval.
This is approval.
I apologize.
Okay. So you want to restate, maybe?
It was a motion to approve.
Okay. Motion to approve. And supported by Mr. Meyerly.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Tuckfield, please follow the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Meyerly?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. All right. Next item, rezoning request residential, one family, suburban, R1S to commercial, local C1. Permanent parcel 0804400034080440035, located on the northwest corner of 25 Mile and Broughton. Section 4, Salvatore Di Mercio?
Di Mercilio.
Mercio. Huh?
Di Mercilio.
Di Mercilio. And I will never probably get it right, so my apologies now and forever. Petitioner. Mr. Box.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. You may, some of you may recall this site, they did come in a couple of years ago for rezoning. At that time, we were just getting underway with the master plan, and we suggested that they hold off on that rezoning until after the master plan was adopted to make sure that it aligned with what our vision was for the township, especially with its proximity to the town center area. And because of that, I will note that this was rezoned when we did the township-wide mass rezoning to get rid of R1S to R1. They used the same application, which is why you see on the agenda, it refers to it as R1S. It's already R1, not R1S, but they are seeking rezoning to C1 commercial. So as I mentioned, it's near, it's on the northwest corner of 25 and Broughton, which is very near to the town center area, but it is not in the town center area. And there is single-family development to the north and to the east and to the west, as well as across the street to the south. But when you look at the master plan, it is master planned for a commercial or office-type setting. Much of the town center area will likely in the future be developed in that intersection as commercial as well. So we feel that the commercial request here is fitting. They are requesting C1, and again, we did speak with the applicant about possibility of C2, and we felt it was a small enough site that C2 would allow, you know, restaurants and things that just couldn't fit on this site. So we urged them to look at C1, and that's what they have come back with. So they are requesting rezoning this evening from R1 to C1, and we are recommending approval at this time.
Okay. And sir, do you, would you state your name and address again for us?
Bill Thompson from Seabrook East Lane, address is 17001 19 Mile Road, Clinton Township.
Okay. Mr. Thompson, do you have anything else you'd like to add?
Not really. Like Mr. Box said, we were here two years ago, and we were, it was suggested that we wait and see what the master plan does. The master plan's calling for this to be commercial, so we requested C1.
Okay. Commissioners?
Yeah, I got a question.
Mr. Oliver?
Is that something they're going to start on right away if they get approvals? Have they got some ideas?
Probably not right away, within the next year or so.
That's right away. In development time, that's right away. I mean, you just got a guy here that had a three-year project, so I think one year's like lightning speed. Okay. So they're just not going to sit on this for?
He's not going to, he's not going to sit on it for 20 years, no.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Thompson. Mr. Thompson, obviously, this is a rezoning, so we try to keep our specific use questions to a minimum, but are you anticipating this to be a multi-tenant type facility, a single-use?
Yes.
Multi?
Multi-tenant, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. Then I need a motion to open it to the public at 7:53.
Make a motion.
Motion by Mr. Meyerly.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. Public, if you're here and you'd like to speak on this item, the rezoning request from residential, one family to commercial C1, please come up, state your name and address, and you have four minutes.
Thank you. My name is John Cramando. I live at 55570 Broughton Road. I'm here with my wife, who lives with me, and also some friends who live on Broughton Road, one of whom was in an affected property because she got the notice, and she let a resident of 25 Mile Road know about it, so that we could all know about what's going on here. First of all, I want to congratulate the Planning Commission, and I guess Mr. Box, on the award that you guys won for the master plan. It's beautiful. And the way you went about developing, excuse me, developing it is very impressive. I looked, I looked at all of the meetings when this came up. I didn't look at them at the time. And we don't have time to do this. We have to elect people to take care of this stuff for us. And you guys are doing a fabulous job of taking care of this stuff for us. There needs to be a vision in place with the way McComb Township being the fastest-growing township in the state of Michigan, or in the country. It's important, and it's a difficult job, and nobody's here to criticize this. But we didn't know, you guys are talking about a 36 square mile, right? Isn't that the size of the township? You guys, your master plan encompasses everything. We're only worried about that tiny corner at the end of our street. This is the first chance that we've had to make a comment on that tiny corner at the end of our street. The questions about C2 are specifically pertinent to- The, the questions about C two are specifically pertinent to our, our concern. You know, we, we have lived here for decades. It was dirt road and farms, sod farms, and, and pheasants and deer for the whole time, and that will, that's gonna change. I understand that's gonna change, we all understand that's gonna change, but we don't have any control over that, so our questions aren't really to have control over that. I see that it's within the master plan to have it commercial somehow. Commercial slash office is what it says in the plan. But we have these, our concerns specifically are, and these are the questions that we'd like to have answered. How, how is it that we stop if, if it's gonna be a C two? It, um, is there something that we can do to, to, uh, get in the way of that if we need to? I don't even know what a C two means. I know what a C one means, I looked, uh, checked it out on, in the ordinances. And doesn't it wait, doesn't it make sense to wait until there's some kind of a need? Does there have to be some kind of a petition from some of the residents? Is there something from anybody in the township saying, "I wish we had a commercial district there so we could go there and get our stuff"? I'm not aware of that, and I don't know that that's required, but there, I don't know that there's a need at the moment. And if there is a need, if it's not, if you don't need that, shouldn't it, commercial development start, I mean, according to the master plan, the vision, shouldn't it start from within the township's center and move out? Isn't that what the idea was, that the township, it was gonna be the center of it? This is on the outskirts of the township center. Seems like we're putting the cart before the horse.
I'll put you down in one minute.
I'm just about done.
Okay.
The last thing I have is, um, is there anything in the master plan to, for you, for me, for anybody, to prevent a rezoning, other than a conversation with Mr. Box from C one to C two, or to C three or C four? Um, that, which would completely change the neighborhood from what it is. Thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you, sir. Alright, anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, at seven fifty-eight, let's close the public portion with a motion.
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Oliver.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Spatafora. All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, motion passes. Do we have, um, a motion?
With Mr. Box.
Oh, Mr. Box, I'm sorry.
Yeah, if I could, I'll try to answer some of those questions, so.
Yep, I'm sorry.
First and foremost, the, his questions about C two, they're not asking for C two, they're asking for C one. Uh, and, and I understand, uh, as, as someone who's not a planner or, or on a planning commission, they may not know what the difference is. So, C four would be the most intense uses. That's the type of stuff you see along Hall Road, and, and it gets less intensive as you get down to C one, so this would be the least intensive uses. Um, and I think that leads into his, his next question about developing Town Center first, and this is kind of on the outskirts of Town Center. If you look at the plan, the master plan, the vision for Town Center, we do have much, uh, a goal for much higher and much more intense commercial use in the downtown, uh, when it comes to fruition, and that's why on the outskirts, we're saying C one, a much less intensive. It's kind of that gradual, uh, as you're coming into a town center, i- it builds up, and as you're going out, it, it deteriorates down to C one. So that, that's really where we came up with that. Um, they're, again, they're, they're not asking for C two. I was only pointing out that we had discussions with them about the possibility of C two, uh, and, and we suggested that they consider C one, and that is what they're asking for, is C one, not C two.
What, can you give us an example of a C two as opposed to a C one?
Probably the biggest difference between C one and C two is C two start, you start to see restaurants pop up. Uh, and I think that's something we wanna contain more in the town center area, um, to, to really help make it thrive and, and become a downtown, uh, you know, a real destination. Uh, it's all about placemaking, a place people wanna go to, and that's what we want in the downtown, not, not on the edge. Um, one other thing I wanted to add, you know, his question about how to stop this, this rezoning. So, when we went through the master plan process, um, most of you were on the Planning Commission at that time, and I'm sure you remember, that is when we want people to speak up, that is when we want people to give us their input. We had a number of open houses and Zoom meetings, and that's when we wanted comments on, "Is this a corner you wanted commercial on"? We showed it in those open houses as being commercial. We got no feedback at that point, that that was something that, uh, the residents of the area were opposed to. Uh, that would be the time. Uh, now that it's already in an adopted master plan, it's, it's difficult for, for you or, or the township board to really say no to some of those items, because it's, it's adopted. They've already said, "This is the future, this is what we're looking for." Far too often, we see people come in complaining when there's a shovel in their ground, that, that's way too late. There's, there's a master plan process, it, it's updated every several years. That's the time to speak up.
Okay.
Mr. Box, can you just explain what, what's allowed to C one during permission?
Um, I, I don't know them all off the top of my head. I can pull up our ordinance quickly.
Just a couple of examples, just so we got, get an idea.
You're, you're gonna see like maybe, you know, a, a party store, or it, it sounds like they're talking about multiple tenants, so a very small strip plaza. Again, it's not a huge site, so in order to meet, you know, parking requirements, and, and depending on its size, if there's gonna be any detention on-site required, um, you know, you're, you're not gonna get large uses. Um, so, uh, C one, uh, would allow things like a bakery shop, a, a beauty shop, cigar shop, a florist, jewelry store, um, shoe repair, uh, just a few to, to go down the list here. Tanning salons.
Okay. Okay. So, just to follow up on that, Mr. Box, you would never get a gas station on a C one?
No.
Okay.
Good.
Mr. Chairman, just a brief comment to the question about how, and I think the, the residents' question was, "How do we keep it from going more intense?", and I, I guess maybe to dovetail what, what Josh was mentioning. Uh, one of the ways we try to make sure that property doesn't go more intense than we want is to get a more desirable use or zoning on that parcel. So the gentleman that Mr. Thompson represents, if we give him C one and they develop it C one, it's highly unlikely that it's going to get rezoned to C two. So that's part of the balance of making sure that when we're looking at these things, it would be very difficult to keep that from going some type of commercial or office. That's the way we envisioned it and, and whatnot, but the, where the flexibility is, what we have, is Mr. Box talking with the applicants and, and negotiating with them and making sure that it's a shared vision of the intensity, which, to me, it sounds like that's what we did here. And I think it's, for a corner of that nature, is an appropriate, uh, use of the zoning, and it's, it's not going to the heavy end, but it is still allowing the property owner to develop it in a way that is feasible and, and profitable for the, for the parcel. So, uh, just to the question, I think this is going exactly to that question, keeping the property from going more intense than what the neighborhood would allow. So, it's my only comment. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Alright, are we good? Alright, do we have a motion on this item? Anybody?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Spatafora?
Uh, based on the discussion from the Planning Commission and as presented by our planner and the department recommendations, I'll make the motion to recommend to the Township Board, uh, rezoning request from, uh, correctly rezoned residential R one to, uh, commercial local, which is, uh, C one.
Okay, and I'll second that. So, Mr. Tuckfield, would you please?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Spatafora.
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Meyerly?
Yes.
Okay, unanimous vote, thank you. Alright, last item on our agenda tonight is the extension of time, site plan. Wolverine Villas, permanent parcel zero eight, zero, five, three, zero, one, zero, zero, eight. Uh, located on the south side, or the, I'm sorry, the east side of Romeo Plank Road, north of Twenty-Five Mile Road, section five, Lombardo Homes petitioner. Mr. Box?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commission. Uh, as you see, uh, the location behind you, uh, and it was in your packet as well. It's at, uh, near the, the northwest, excuse me, northeast corner of Romeo Plank and Twenty-Five Mile Road. This is a multi-family, uh, development. Uh, to be honest, I, I was a little surprised when I saw this come in. I can't believe it's been a year already. Um, but they are, they are moving forward, and they're seeking their, uh, extension at this time. They're not changing anything on the plans at this time. Uh, so, staff is recommending approval. Uh, there's no zoning issues anticipated coming from this.
So, just so the public knows, uh, the reason for the extension of time was they needed permits, correct?
Um, that and, and other, they have a lot of things that they're working on, I think, in the township, and.
Lombardo Homes, sure. Okay. Alright, questions from? Is a petitioner here? No, he wouldn't be here, probably. Alright.
Again, lightning speed.
Lightning speed.
Mr. Chairman, just one quick question. Mr. Box, this is the first extension request, correct?
That's correct. Uh, they, they also need to get an extension, uh, for the, this was a conditional rezoning. Uh, that, that needs to be extended as well, that goes to the Township Board.
And, and, and I know this is the first one, so we don't normally have to ask this question, but I, I've been trying to ask this, or have decided to ask it more often. We're seeing movement on this actively, it's not like nothing's happening.
That's correct.
Okay, very good. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That was my question. When will they?
Wasn't, wasn't to pick on this particular applicant.
To the jerk.
It's a good, good routine question.
Okay, we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, if there's no other discussion, I would make a motion to grant the extension of time. Uh, this would be a grant, correct, or approval? Sorry, I always have to ask, 'cause I never get it straight. Grant an extension of time, uh, an approval of the extension of time for the site plan for Wolverine Villas, permanent parcel zero eight, zero, five, three, zero, one, zero, zero, eight. Uh, and this would be because it is the first extension of time, and that the applicant is actively working on the project and needs additional time.
I'll support.
Okay, motion by Mr.?
Just a comment on the motion, if I may.
Sure.
And I, I'd like to just add for the benefit of the Commission as well, and from my, uh, personal experience, these days, as far as, um, the approval process with a lot of the, uh, federal, state, and local, uh, government agencies, it just seems to be taking a much longer length of time, you know, to get approvals. And this is why you may see, and we may see in the future, more, um, requests for extension of time. I know the first, uh, request oftentimes is customarily, uh, done if there's no changes, but you may see, uh, you know, even a second request for another extension, uh, you know, through really no fault of the developer per se, but because of other agencies that, you know, do reviews, re-reviews, different plan reviewers that unfortunately do cause delays. So, that was just my comment on, uh, the motion.
Thank you. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Tuckfield, seconded by?
Mr. Meyerly.
Mr. Meyerly. Alright, call the roll.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Tuckfield votes yes. Mr. Meyerly?
Yes.
Mr. Spatafora?
Yes.
Mr. Hardy?
Yes.
Ms. Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes unanimously. Alright. Uh-oh, there's somebody in the audience. So, public comments on non-agenda items. Anybody wanna, anybody wanna, did you wanna come up and talk? No? Oh, you were there, and I thought, well, maybe. Alright, and seeing none, we'll move on?
That was our last petitioner.
Yeah, it's okay, he's there. I'll call him up, what the heck. Alright, Commissioners' comments?
I should've probably waited and said what I said in the commission.
That'd have been perfect.
Now that I think about it.
That's okay. Alright, anyone else? Alright, then we have the Macomb Township Board of Trustees liaison update. Mr. Charles Oliver.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, just for the record.
How many meetings have you?
Three meetings, I'm gonna, so I'm gonna make it brief, okay? Alright, we started with the December twelfth, December seventh meeting, and here are the highlights, okay? The township, a new fancy, high-tech time clock, basically punching-in machine. So, so the, so it's gonna, it, it, it's gonna make a lot easier and a lot better to track all the employees. And not track, I shouldn't use the word "track", uh, to, to, uh, do their attendance. It's just gonna make it a lot easier. So that's the one thing. Uh, two Spark Grants, and we're applying. I'm not saying we're getting them, but we are trying to get them. One, uh, some playground equipment for Pitchford Park. The other would be a pathway around this pond with a nice little, uh, observation deck. Again, we're applying, okay? Alright, big news of that meeting was Richard Bentley got a three-year term here.
He did.
The board approved that.
Yep.
Okay, the following meeting, December twenty-second, Plant Moran gave their report to us. They said the township was in physically good financial condition, and that was about it. Uh, Liz Rowe, she's our grant writer, okay? To date, she's collected approximately three hundred thousand in grants, okay? Alright, the water department was buying an excavator and a trailer for approximately a hundred and thirty thousand. Human Resources promoted a lieutenant, one lieutenant and one sergeant in the fire department. Fire department got, uh, new equipment, and that was, oh, interesting fact, the state law requires the township assessor to take applications for residents in this community that cannot pay their taxes. And it's quite a form. And, uh, this year, we had one resident that, that met all the criteria, and, uh, their taxes were granted. Uh, they didn't have to pay them. So that, that's kind of an interesting fact. Out of all the residents we had, we only had one, so.
Right.
Kinda nice. Okay, we're gonna go to January eleventh, twenty-three, alright? The DPW bought two new trucks, and they're doing a lot of improvement there. They're buying a lot of new machinery. So that's kinda nice to see that. The other big news is that we're, we're gonna try, and we think we're gonna be able to do it, uh, move Old Town Hall from Wade's property to this property. And we're gonna put it across the street, or that, that's the site over there, right, yeah? And they're gonna take the rough off it and try to move it that way. And the board allowed the supervisor to spend up to, I think, seventy-five thousand, okay? So that was kinda interesting. Uh, we hired the parking rec, hired, uh, Audrey Broll for, uh, the seniors, and she's gonna work specifically with the senior group. And Audrey used to work for the township, and, uh, she wanted to hire full-time at the, years ago, but we, we didn't have a spot, and now this spot opened up, so she's gonna be in charge of that. And that's all the news.
That's, that's awesome.
And I see that, uh?
That's free, that's free meetings.
And I see the Oliver's, uh, sod farmers donating any sod.
Any sod for the?
The rest of the, you know, the new, uh, town hall.
That's what I heard, too. I heard that, too.
We're gonna cover it. I told the supervisor, I said, "We'll turn it green."
I, I have Mr. Bentley on the phone. Oh, wait a minute, I, hello? Oh, I, I lost him, so it's okay.
He had five questions.
Where was that, where was the old town hall originally? Obviously, we're, we're, by the fire station?
The town hall started, I think, at, at the old fire, well, which is our new fire station.
Yeah, Station One?
Yeah, then it got moved to, to Don Wade's property.
They sold it, they sold it to Wade's?
Yeah, yeah, back in the day.
Okay.
And, and then it sat there for forty years.
Okay.
If not longer. And then when we bought Wade's property, uh, they were using it a little bit on-site when the township owned Wade's, okay? And then, obviously, we sold it, and then we just, we're gonna move it off that site onto our site, and we're gonna try to restore it the best we can, and, and, uh, I think it'll be used, actually. I think it'll be kind of a?
It's, it's, like, you know, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna go back Clinton Township, 'cause they moved, the original Clinton Township was there at Maravian and, uh, Harrington, and they moved it up to, they got that little village there.
Yeah.
Historic village.
Huh? Historic village, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It was kinda nice.
I mean, we, we, we need to have that.
A historic village.
Or, just for our residents. Or, just for our residents to know how this community started. It didn't start like this, that's for sure. You know, going back to the, to the fire department, and going back to the founding fathers of this community, they were tired to, to build it to what it is today, so...
Will it be an activity center, or will it be like a museum of sorts?
We, we don't know exactly. We're going to get it here, get it set up. There's a lot of ideas, so I don't really want to, you know...
Sure.
Say, "We're going to do this," and we don't. But it, it'll be a part of this community. We're just not going to park it there and forget about it. It's, we're going to make it a part of this community.
Awesome.
And the residents will enjoy it, too. I mean, it's not a very big building now. We're not talking about, you know, it's a small building, but...
Well, if they can move the Little Gem Theater, they can move that little town hall.
Yeah. And, and just to add, there's, there's quite a few developers that are helping the township with that. We're not doing it on our own.
That's awesome.
The developers in this community are coming forward, and some are doing cement work, some are doing, just giving us money to move it. So, yeah, I want to mention that, too. I don't want to, we're not doing it all.
Awesome.
And, and that, that, again, brings community together when everyone gets involved.
Absolutely.
Yep. And that's it.
Okay. ZBA liaison, Mr. Tuckfield?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I do have one item for ZBA and two brief items that I'd forgotten that I'm also going to touch on here, because I have a microphone. First, just want to congratulate you, Mr. Chairman. I think you have a well-earned spot as the chair. And I appreciate the board voting for, for us as well. Here's to a year without me having to, to sub in for you. I think that's what happened last year, and I'm, I'm good for another year if you could, if you can do the streak all the way through. I think the last one I chaired was Meyer. I think that was last year, and I'm happy to, happy to leave that off for a while.
Was I not here for that one? Go ahead, go ahead.
It, it left an impression. We'll, we'll see if it was the right, the, the right meeting or not. So, that's the first thing. Just thank you to everybody. I'm glad, glad Michael's on for another, another term. Second item was, was also, again, more of a Commissioner comment, but I just wanted to bring it up, that we have a new representative for the south end of the township in the State House, Joe Aragona, who sat on the Clinton Township Board. Mr. Myerly might know him.
Very well.
I've gotten to know him a little bit through the campaign process, and I think we're going to be, we're going to have a little more conversation with our, our state rep than we did with past state reps. I think he's going to be pretty involved in the community, and I've seen him out a lot recently. So, I'm glad he's, I think he got sworn in last week, and looking forward to seeing our township being well-represented in the State House. It's, it's important. And the last thing, ZBA-related, is I think we mentioned it last time, I think we mentioned it last time, the ZBA has a vacancy, and Mr. Viviano has been advertising for people to apply to the ZBA, so I just wanted to mention that. There is a spot, and I believe the township is taking applications.